Made 191 observations, wrote four citations, made six Part I arrests, made 36 Part II arrests, and 18 warrant arrests. For those efforts and the outstanding work he did over the quarter, he's being recognized as the street cop of the quarter. Congratulations. Second shift, I'd like to have Sheldon Sherman step up. Deputy Sherman actually wrote 125 reports in the past quarter, handled 168 calls for service, made 376 observations where the average deputy made about 198. Wrote 110 citations, made three Part I arrests, 74 Part II arrests, and six warrant arrests. And for his efforts, he's being recognized as street cop of the quarter. The third deputy is Veronica Ramirez. Veronica did an outstanding job as well. During the last quarter, she wrote 54 reports, handled 237 calls for service, made 153 observations, wrote 31 citations, eight Part I arrests, 36 Part II arrests, and 10 warrant arrests. And for her efforts, she's being recognized as street cop of the quarter. And finally, as I mentioned before, each quarter, a detective is chosen as detective of the quarter. And in this particular, it's John Venzel. He's done an outstanding job working in his position in the detective bureau at Lancaster Station. He's got a solve rate that rivals anyone back there. Extremely heavy caseload, as I'm sure you can imagine. There's somewhere in the neighborhood of 14,000 arrests every year. And he is part of a very small cadre of personnel who are required to get dispositions on all of those incidents and investigate the ones that aren't completely clear at the time of the call. And he did an outstanding job doing that. For that, congratulations.
Can we get one photo with everyone? Yeah. Can we come on down and get a photo with everyone? No, you guys stay there. You know, these are the guys that have created a safe city to the point that crime is almost down 50% in the last five years, almost 50. By the end of the year, I think we hit 50%. And that is an historic accomplishment in the entire nation. We thank you. Thank you. Do I have the certificates for the cross-country team? Please hand them off the certificates. Thank you. Okay, if I could have the coaches come up, Andy Bisaki and Neil Small. Start with you.
I don't know where Neil is.
Did you not tell them that tonight was happening? That's an old trick, Andy. Once again, the Desert Christian High School cross-country team is here because they win all the time. And this year is no exception. The team finished second place for Division V at the California State Championship on November 26, 2011. Broke school team records on six courses: the Bosco Course, the Belgeffe Course, the Woodward Park, Mount Sack, Palona Vista, and Vasquez Courses. You didn't run that in the summer, did you?
They trained there in the summer.
That's brutal. The team was referred to several times as the second-best team in Division V history, and the team won the Desert Mountain League title for the 20th consecutive year. You really are all-stars for all the high schools and everything, aren't you? I mean, this is incredible success. To be second in the state, that's wow. We're a big state. Come on down. Why don't you help me pass them out? Why don't you announce them, and I'll hand them out.
That's the coach?
No, it's right here.
Scott, for the second consecutive year, was an All-State Honoree. So, he's one of the top runners in the state. Brian Curtis. Brian has earned all CIF honors before. Those three guys over there were, have run the first, third, and fifth fastest time of any desert Christian runner in school history over 20 years. Zack Patton. That ran on a bruised hill and ran the most courageous race I've ever seen at the state championship. Those first five were our top-five runners. Those four are seniors. Andrew's a junior, so we get him back next year. Okay, Ray's not here. They have finals, so he's studying. I got a calculus exam tomorrow. Same with this one. Josh DeVore. Jonathan is a junior, so we get him next year.
That begs the question, why you guys aren't studying?
They were studying, and as soon as we got them, they want to study again. Because we need a eligible for track that starts in two weeks. Okay, and Jeff Marshall.
Okay, let's get a picture. You want to take these?
Sure.
Or you're going to take this and this?
From there?
And I'll take this.
And we really appreciate-
Let's get a picture with the boys first, and then let's bring the parents down. Oh, yeah, you can come down and take the picture.
Can I say that we really appreciate that the City of Lancaster does this for us every year? I'm glad to see it, if you don't see it in most cities. So, as a coach, I really want to thank you for that.
We really appreciate them winning, so. You make us all look good. Can you get them all entered? Do you want to move them in and cluster them? Can we do two rows, you guys? Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendars consist of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the agency or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda and non-agend items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir. Except, sir, at this time, we would like to add an urgency item after NB2 regarding allocation of funds brought about by items posted subsequent to the agenda, in fact, interpretations of the Supreme Court decision on redevelopment. I think you could vote now or later?
Yeah. You could vote now to add it to the agenda, and then we'd come up at the appropriate time.
Do I need a motion?
It does require a four-fist vote.
Do I need a motion?
Yes.
Now, I'm with it. We put it on as an urgency item.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. It's on.
Does the redevelopment agency have to vote separately? Let's vote orally because one of the boxes isn't. So, do I have a motion?
Chairman Chris, can we have the record reflect that Macedo was present? I think we had a roll call with, without our acknowledgement.
Box work on the last vote? Yes. The council's does, but one of the agencies-
Oh, yes, he doesn't still.
Doesn't work. So, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
You can go ahead and do your agency minutes.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the agency minutes?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll have a presentation, RNB1. There's no speaker cards. Barbara?
Good evening, Chairman Chris and agency directors. The item that's before you now for consideration is adoption of Resolution Number 02-12. This resolution amends a prior resolution that had adopted the previous enforcement obligation payment schedule. This resolution then replaces that with this current and final obligation payment schedule. This action is required by Assembly Bill X126 and will be the last time that this is before you as the redevelopment agency.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 0212.
Second that.
Let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes unanimously. We'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris at this time.
Is there a motion to pass the minutes?
So moved.
Approve the minutes, I'm sure.
Second that.
Passes unanimous. Any items on the consent calendar to be removed? Anyone? There's no speaker cards. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the council consent calendar as currently comprised.
Your second?
I second.
It's approved. It's unanimous. Any speaker cards in PH1?
No.
Want to wave the?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I'm with it. We introduce ordinance number 974 and adopt Resolution Number 12-01.
Is there a second?
His second.
That was PH1, right? This is new business one.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and city council members. The item before you for consideration is adoption of Resolution Number 12-07. It's very similar to the resolution that was adopted by the redevelopment agency. However, this is being put before you as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency. ABX126 requires that the final enforceable obligation payment schedule be presented to the successor agency. In addition, it requires that we create a separate fund called the Redevelopment Obligation Retirement Fund into which property tax revenues that the successor agency receives and assets that it receives from the former redevelopment agency are then deposited into and tracked for financial statement purposes. The resolution before you does those actions. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Barbara.
Excuse me. Mayor Paris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I had an opportunity to tally up what Barbara just presented, and I was really dismayed. Our outstanding debt or obligation is half a billion dollars. And as a citizen, just a layperson, I'm wondering, you know, how are we going to pay this off? I mean, is there going to be, what if the economy continues to go down? Are we going to have to take money out of the general fund? How are we going to pay off a half a billion dollars? Wish someone would give me a response.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we adopt Resolution Number 12-01.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the action before you on this item is a resolution that, as the city, you are declining to assume the functions of the redevelopment agency for housing purposes. But you are designating the Lancaster Housing Authority to assume those responsibilities under the law. As the legislation is currently drafted, the, all of the current unencumbered fund balances in the housing fund are to be transferred to the county for redistribution among various taxing entities. So, what you are taking as a housing authority, assuming you adopt this, the housing authority would be taking as a matter of law the, all of the assets of the, that were acquired with housing funds. That would include the wellness homes and the other homes that we have bought over time through foreclosure actions, as well as any other properties that were purchased using housing fund monies. And there's a fairly substantial list of those assets that would be transferred to the housing authority. And the housing authority could then operate, utilizing the provisions of the redevelopment law as they, as they applied to housing functions, rather than the housing authority law, which has a more restrictive limitation on what can be done. So, the reason why we're recommending that this go to the housing authority versus the city assuming the obligation, in the, in the law, the, as a successor agency, the city's liability is specifically limited to the property tax revenue that they receive over the course of time that would have been received as tax increment, it's received as property tax revenues into a special trust fund and used to pay the enforceable obligations. The, there isn't a similar limitation on liability for the city. And the, and the way the law works is the city takes over as the successor agency for the agency, but the city itself, not as the successor agency and not with limited liability, takes over the housing functions. And the law is so poorly drafted, it is very unclear what that really means. Does it mean you actually have to go out and do inclusionary housing? Do you have to spend general fund monies to provide replacement housing? Do you have to spend general fund monies to restrict occupancy in newly constructed housing, whether or not the city or agency were involved in the project? So, it's really unclear what the scope of the function is that you're assuming. But by assuming it with the, with the housing authority, which is a separate legal entity, we can limit that exposure, but still take advantage of our ability to control those properties. And I think that we've gone back and forth on how to do this, but I think that, that makes the most sense on a going-forward basis for the city. So, the resolution tonight would accomplish those things. The housing authority, as you recall, is, consists currently of five members of the city council. Now, do you want me to discuss any proposals on that? One of the things we've talked about is the possibility of adopting a resolution which would stop the city council from being the housing authority. And that would mean that we would then appoint five commissioners to the board to control the housing authority. Those appointments would be made by statute by the mayor with the concurrence of the balance of the city council. There would be five commissioners, and if there are tenants of the housing authority, would include at least two tenant representatives on the board. And we have a number of properties that are leased, and we would have a large selection of people to serve as the tenant representatives, including representatives of organizations that occupy the wellness homes. So, if that is your desire, we can bring that resolution back at the next council meeting. But for tonight, we need, we do need to make this finding that the city does not want to assume those functions and that we're designating the Lancaster Housing Authority to be the successor entity that would take over those housing functions.
Any questions? Michael Reeves?
Mayor, excuse me. Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose this creation of this housing authority successor agency. I read the decision by the State Supreme Court. Transfers control of redevelopment agencies to successor agencies, which are contemplated to be the city and county that created the redevelopment agency, that's the city council. Another thing they said in the decision, redevelopment agencies and their community sponsors are co-joined to the extent that in virtually all instances, the same individuals constitute both the redevelopment agency governing board and the city council or county board of supervisors that created the agency. I think that if we use this creative tactic, we're going to get in trouble. We're going to have another lawsuit like we did in 1993, which our city attorney is familiar with, Lancaster Redevelopment Agency versus Dibley. I do not favor this creation of this other agency. I think that the successor agency should be exclusively the city council. Now, I understand that the mayor wants to appoint some people to commissions and so forth, but I don't think this is the way to do it. I think we transfer it, and, okay, so the mayor and Mrs. Johnson can't be on the successor agency, but I think it'd simplify things just to transfer everything over to the city council and make it simple so we don't have a lawsuit, because we're, as you listen to the city attorney, it gets really mixed and complicated. And at this point in our city's history, we don't need the complication. Thank you very much.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'd actually like to address Mr. Reeves-
I'd actually like to address Mr. Reeves' comments. You know, let's be straight here. The staff and the people up here didn't create this, the state did. Also, frankly, the state and the county, they're still trying to understand how to administer this money, once they're at the receiving end of it. And I guess respectfully, Mr. Reeves, the staff and the folks up here have been trying, and we've had to make interpretations, and quite frankly, with very little guidance from those very people who are supposed to guide us. So I would, you know, submit to you that perhaps Mr. Bozigan and Ms. Boswell, could maybe you have a sit down with you and kind of explain the process and actually where we are, instead of you trying to make your own interpretation of it, because it's not that that's simple. That's just a comment, and I felt like I just really wanted to address, and it warranted being addressed at this point.
And I'm glad you made it.
Thank you. I'll try to be quiet the rest of the meeting.
What I'm envisioning is I'm going to probably appoint Kitty Zito and Cassandra Harvey to the housing authority when we reconvene at the next meeting, although I will consider any other applications. You know, the housing authority would have authority also over the wellness homes and the neighborhood impact homes, which I think are the most innovative things we're doing right now, and probably having the most impact. I also think the reason we're in this difficulty is the state has forgotten that they are here to support the cities. The cities are not here to support the state. They've just turned it around on us. But more importantly, I think that we should remember that we are here to support the neighborhoods. And I think that the role of the wellness homes and the impact homes is serving that goal admirably. And whoever is on that housing authority, if the council wants to stay on it, then I'll appoint them. If they don't, then we'll appoint other people that are interested. But I want that those two programs expanded. I want them to grow, and I want them to thrive, because I really can't think of anything we're doing right now that is going to have the most far-reaching impact as those two things. And I think eventually, other cities around the world are going to start adopting that model, because it just makes so much sense. And, you know, whenever I speak to people at various conferences, they're astonished that we're doing that, because no other city in the world is doing that.
Rex, if I may, I agree with you too. Growing up in that neighborhood as a child, it really does give such a rewarding feeling with the wellness homes and the impact homes, to see these children with life and seeing that we do care. And I wish we would have had those when I was growing up. So I definitely support what you say.
It really is the most fun we have.
It really is, yeah.
I was surprised to see just how many people there were. Me and Mr. Mann went to a couple of them to put the bikes together that you purchased. And there are literally hundreds at each home that we went to. We went to three of them, so we saw probably two or 300 kids. And it was just, it's just great, but, you know, how the entire community is coming together.
Absolutely.
I think we talk about having a positive impact on the neighborhoods. You know, Pastor Prather was attesting to that tonight, of knowing the impact that's taking place. And I think that's also indirectly, it's helping us with crime historically in some of the neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
We definitely got to stay on top of that.
Okay, good. So that's the plan. I also would like the staff to develop some options in regards to how we could expand the council out to seven people, and the various different ways to do that, whether we do it by district, whether we do it by general election and district, you know, there's all kinds of models other cities have adopted. But I think we have to recognize that the city staff is now 50 people less than it used to be. Isn't that right?
Almost 70.
Almost 70. It used to be that we got to sit up here and vote, and they did all the work. If we're going to have a city that thrives, we're going to have to have people in these positions that actually work, because, and I know that it's out of the goodness of people's hearts, but that goes for commissioners and council members, and that's why I think seven council members might be more efficient at this particular stage in the city's development. So with that, I guess we need to vote? Need a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 12-08.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Mayor Paris and city council members, I will be giving this report, and Finance Director Barbara Boswell will assist as well and be available for any questions. For the benefit of the public and the council, I'll explain in a moment why this is an urgency item. The action that the council's being asked to take, actually, the financing authority, the council as the financing authority and the redevelopment agency, is to appropriate existing funds of 2.27 million that's existing in the finance authority to pay the debt obligations of the agency for debt it was set aside to pay. So it's essentially was set aside for debt obligations. We're asking you to appropriate the funds. This is a very complex issue. I really appreciate the comments of Director Harvey, and I'll try to be as succinct as possible to explain for the benefit of everyone where we're at and what's going. First off, this is urgency for two reasons. One, the Supreme Court decision recently upholding AB 26 did a blanket extension of four months for all of the dates in the legislation. In doing that, it created a hole of about four months, which essentially said to all redevelopment agencies up and down the state, you have to pay all your obligations, but the county auditor controller is not going to give you any money between February and May. And you have no way of ever getting it back, but we still expect you to pay all your obligations, and we're not telling you how. That's the result of a lot of things, but I think if I'd sum it up, one, this legislation's poorly written, because it was written quickly. It was written by the state to get money. Taking 60 years of a program redevelopment and trying to quote-unquote "fix it" in a week doesn't work. It also doesn't work when you don't bring stakeholders into it, like redevelopment agencies and bondholders, to say what are the impacts of it? You have unintended consequences. The second thing is it's written by people who don't understand redevelopment. They act as if redevelopment is a separate entity, and they don't understand the nature that cities and redevelopment agencies are intertwined, and the very nature that redevelopment law requires that you issue debt and obligation to get tax increment. You don't get tax increment unless you have bond payments or you have obligations to other entities, contractual obligations. That's the only reason you get tax increment in the first place. The reason it's urgency is because it's been continuously interpreted, and just as recently as Friday, the interpretation was, you have to pay, but you have no money from us to make the payments. And we're not the only ones in this boat. Lots of agencies are in this boat. As a matter of fact, just in the last 20 minutes, I was handed this, and I'm going to read it, but the rating agency Finch placed every redevelopment bond in the state of California on a negative credit rating watch. And the reason is, the rating, and this just happened today, the rating watch negative reflects Finch's belief that recently implemented state legislation creates a heightened risk at all rating levels that flow from the funds to holders of tax allocation bonds tabs, and they may be inconsistent with the requirements of the bond indentures. Essentially, what they're saying is what we've all looked at and determined, is that it's difficult to have people pay bonds without the money coming in. What is the situation? In simple terms, I've explained the obligation to pay without the money, but what would have happened without AB 26? Us and other agencies are challenged in our property tax values. So what agencies did in the past, a lot of cities and agencies, is the city would do a short-term loan to the agency so they could make their bond payments and other obligations, because obligations aren't flat, they're usually a couple times a year. And by the end of the fiscal year, money would come in enough to put that agency in a positive fund balance position. And in our agency, that would have been the same case. We would have done that. At the end of the fiscal year, we'd be in a positive fund balance, as we always have been. But the interesting and somewhat absurd thing is that AB 26 specifically forbids agencies from taking any loan proceeds, and it specifically prohibits cities from loaning money to agencies. And if we even did that, it specifically prohibits all repayment of any loans between cities and agencies. Over the last 30 years, the city and the agency being intertwined, the city has loaned the agency $50 million. That goes away based on the AB 26. And that's an asset of the city that would be gone. We don't count it as cash flow, but it's nevertheless an asset. And that's somewhat the absurdity of it. As I said, our recommendation is to do just what the law says. It says, take all available tax increment, which is money we have set aside up to the point they didn't pay us to make our obligations, plus the money we set aside in the debt, the 2.27 million, for debt coverage, and we're going to turn that over to the trustee of the bonds. That's probably close to enough to pay the payment. If there's more that's needed, trustees hold reserves as well. They usually hold in either surety or cash 10% of all bonds issued, which in this case would be several million dollars. Long term, it will be the county auditor controller's responsibility to provide funds sufficient to the successor agencies to make all of their obligations, including debt payments. We're prohibited, as I said, from making the short-term loan. We wouldn't recommend it even if we could, because there's no value to the citizens of Lancaster, in our opinion, of using city funds for something redevelopment agency that doesn't exist. It's important to note that the city and the RDA didn't create that, okay? The state created this, because they put through poorly crafted legislation, and they haven't been able to manage their finances properly for a number of years. The result is something like this, where every bond and every bondholder is at risk because of this action. We didn't create it, but we have the obligation to do the best we can to manage the situation, and we believe this is the best and prudent manner of managing that. Myself, Barbara Boswell are available to answer any questions. I would, before I turn over questions, like to really thank our finance department, in particular Barbara Boswell and Pam Statzman, who have had to deal with this nightmare for the last three months, while they have to get year-end reports done, while they have to start on a budget process, while they have to deal with auditors, some that the state's sending on small grants, and they've done a yeoman's job. So I really want to thank Barbara and her staff.
Any questions?
I just have one comment. I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work you all have done, because at the end of the day, you are making the best decision for the citizens of Lancaster. So I do appreciate that.
Let me be clear. Well, I don't know that clarity is possible in this situation, but nonetheless, the redevelopment agency is disbanded.
As of February 1st.
They owe us $50 million.
Yes.
But they disappeared. So does the redevelopment agency owe other people money also?
Yes, the state would consider those enforceable obligations if it's a third party, but we as a city, in their view, are not protected by the U.S. Constitution Contract Clause.
That's a, you know, I recognize it's going to be a struggle to get the $50 million. So, but the redevelopment agency itself owes these bonds.
Yes.
Now, is there any reason the city should be paying those bonds?
No. It should only be paid, the answer is no.
So if we stop paying any money towards the redevelopment agency, who pays the bonds?
The way the law is written, and this is where the interpretation comes in, and quite frankly, I don't know that the state knows what they got themselves into, it's then the county auditor controller's responsibility to look at all the bonds, in LA County's case, countywide, all the agencies, figure out what needs to be done, figure out what reserves need to have, and then provide the money from tax increment that they're now getting to cover bonded indebtedness, reserve requirements, and any other things that might be clauses of the hundreds of bonds that have been issued.
So has there been an analysis of what happens if everybody defaults?
I would say certainly not by the state who passed it, and I can't, there's none that I know of.
Now, for us to, I mean, obviously, we shouldn't be loaning money just to an agency that owes us $50 million and isn't going to pay it. I mean, that's usually a bad credit risk, I would assume. Right? Right?
That's a bad credit risk, and we can't do it anyway.
So the action we're taking, or the path we're traveling, is the city's going to stop paying any of this, right?
Absolutely. We're only turning over the bare minimum required, which is revenues from tax increment, which AB 26 and the bond documents require. It's revenue generated, no city funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Was this the responsibility of anybody that's sitting up here?
No. It was not caused by anyone sitting up there. Unfortunately, you're having the obligation to deal with it, but no, you did not cause it, nor you're responsible for the consequences.
This is caused by the state.
Absolutely.
You mean Kitty and Cassandra don't have to pay the $50 million?
Depends on what you told them before you nominated them. They can donate to the city.
Thank you.
You know, Mayor Paris, I think that, sitting in a briefing with staff twice discussing this, and me trying to look forward to see what the outcome might be, you know, it's clear that what the city managers stated, that I don't think they did any forward thinking. And I don't realize, I don't think they realize, obviously, the legislature up there that supported this decision, I don't think they fully understand the, you know, how redevelopment agencies work, because I think it's going to come unraveled on them. I just, when I look, and I keep looking, and then, you know, unfortunately, I think the county's going to have an administrative nightmare based on how it's been proposed to me. So all I can tell them is good luck. I think they've now taken on a monster that I think all they saw was dollars, and we're going to be the winners here. And I just think it's going to come unraveled on them. It's my interpretation. But clearly, we don't want to give them any more money than we have to, and it's begrudgingly that we even got to give them, as far as I'm concerned, the $2,270,000. But if that's what the law says, so be it. But I think it would be foolish of anybody up here to even think in terms of ever giving them anything other than what now is required.
Does Contract Cities have a memorandum on the enforceability of the loans?
On enforceability of the city loans?
Of the loans to the redevelopment agency.
I don't know if League of Cities do, I do.
Do you? Could you send that to me?
Sure.
Your motion?
We have to do the finance and redevelopment agency separately.
Do they have to do those separately?
Yes. Transfer the finance first to the city council.
Through the finance first?
Yeah. So let's do it. I'll move on behalf of the finance authority that we appropriate the $2,270,000 from the finance authority from the fund balance as reflected in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Passes unanimously. Is there another motion?
That would be more of an increase.
Do we have a motion for the redevelopment agency?
So moved as reflected in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor Paris, I'd like to say one thing. I really, on behalf of staff, and I think the citizens, we appreciate working with a council and agency board that is not afraid to make decisions for the betterment of the city. And it is refreshing, and it may sound gratuitous to people that see this council, but when you've seen and worked with other cities and other councils, this does not happen everywhere. So I would not take for granted the ability of staff and the citizens and the council to work together to go through a really difficult situation that we didn't create. So thank you.
What do they do instead?
Really? I don't know what choice do they have?
Well, they, like a lot of people, are afraid to make decisions. They keep waiting and waiting and waiting, and say, geez, I'd like more information, geez, I want to see what's happening, geez, what's the most popular thing to do, 100 other things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And you know, you're right, that's why I'm so honored to be part of this team. One of the things that I think we're all about is, we don't complain, we just do something about it. So I think that's what we need to do, is just continue making our city strong.
In regards to the appointment of the commissioners, I've received a busload of applications, and I'll be doing that on the February 14th meeting. Mr. Reeves, did you still want to?
Mr. Reeves, did you still want to speak to it? Okay, come on up. That's why I come here, is to hear your comments.
Just two more times, this is one after this, and then you finish with me. Mayor Paris, council, staff, I know that you want people to participate in our city, Mayor Paris. And may I make a suggestion? Instead of commissions, why don't you appoint groups of people to discuss specific issues? You know, like if we have a problem with the wellness houses, for example, get a group of people to look at that problem. You know, if you point people to commissions, it's the same people discussing the same issues, and it's usually the same prominent people in town who are on the commissions, and nothing ever changes. But if we have specific things that comes up, come up, and you appoint committees that embrace people who have never been on anything in their lives, who are ordinary people, and they could focus on that issue, I think it would benefit the city. I understand that some of these commissions have sunset laws, and, you know, they may go away. They're not in the city charter. So when they do go away, you may want to consider these committees of people, you know, just ordinary people, like me, and we would focus on the issue, come up to the council with a solution, and then when there's another problem, like redevelopment or whatever, they could focus on that. So that's all on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. No action on the Financing Authority, no action on the Housing Authority, City Manager. Any announcements or reports?
I have one I'd like to brief. I know the mayor's going to be speaking about the trip to UAE, Abu Dhabi, and Dubai next month, but I'd like to show a couple pictures and make a couple of observations, and ask Jason to as well, too. One of the things that we've done, we did over there, and it was an amazing trip, was make real and substantive relationships with people who have money and want to invest, and it's things that we're already doing in renewable energy. I think it was truly an amazing trip, and people need to realize how important relationships are. We have a downtown because of relationships that were made years earlier with people who want to invest in Lancaster because of the relationship. We have a Lancaster Business Park and Lance Camper, and the jobs it produces, and countrywide because of relationships. So it's critically important, when you're doing something well, like we are in renewable energy, to also deal with other people that want to invest in that. I think the mayor said it best when we were there, and it was sort of a whirlwind, but it was, if you want to be the alternative energy capital of the world, you have to first engage the world. You've got to engage other people. I'd like to ask Deputy City Manager Jason Cottle to make a couple comments.
And part of it, I think, was most eye-opening, was, you know, oftentimes, we're doing this work, this energy work here locally, and you don't get a gauge of what's happening, either in a statewide scale, or a national scale, even in an international scale. But in the presentation the mayor gave at the World Energy Forum, he touched on the projects we're working on, and I'll just run through them real quick, from eSolar. This is a project we've succeeded in and that we're continuing to work on, eSolar, KBBYD Home, Solar Lancaster, the School Solar Program, Behind the Meter Projects, our Crest Program, our California Clean Energy Authority, the transmission line we're working on, Morgan Solar and Instream, which is an experimental project we're working on, and the Net Zero Cities and the Smart Zero Cities projects. When you lay this body of work together and you put it on a world stage, it's amazing how you feel that, you know, you're really leading the effort. When you compare that to London, who was on stage with mayor, and New York, and Masdar, which we visited, you know, you put our successes and our future against theirs, and it's really, you know, it's really energizing, no pun intended, to be part of it. And it was just a fascinating process and trip to put ourselves against them.
Mayor, I'm going to transition this to something I think you'll like, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to make any comments before.
Well, I think I'd rather wait until I put the presentation together. It was interesting that we were on the stage with those cities, and I think the reason we were, because normally, you end up on that stage based upon the size of your city, and we're, what they call a Tier 3 city. And for a Tier 3 city to be on the stage with a Tier 1 city, it doesn't often happen. But when the Tier 3 city has surpassed all of them, you know, I mean, we are so far ahead of the rest of the world in becoming a net zero city, that it's, you know, you kind of wonder what they were doing on that stage up there with us. Because it really is that remarkable, what we're doing here, but we don't notice it, because, you know, it's just everyday life. But there's not another city out there where 90% of the city buildings, the power comes from the sun. We have 24% of the city's energy coming from the sun. Nobody has matched that, and we got there in about four years. So the, all indications are, we will be the first net city in the world, if we continue at this pace, and if Southern California Edison would work with us. I mean, that's all it's going to take for us to lead the world, and something that every country in the world wants to achieve, is Southern California Edison to get on the team. Okay?
It was a very hectic trip, and there was a lot of work done. We did have the opportunity, for a few moments of fun, to celebrate the mayor's birthday. This is one thing we'd probably rather not...
That's Jason, not the mayor. The mayor's a little thinner.
Oh, oh. But it was the mayor's birthday on Saturday, so we'd like to say happy birthday to you, and he celebrated his 60th birthday. And copies of that picture will be available for...
And what were you doing in my room?
Birthday gift?
I don't know.
The hotel I was at, they provided you with bottles of cologne, and my son stole them. Okay, moving on. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, any person who would like to address the redevelopment agency or the Council on Items Not on the Agenda, may fill out a speaker card. You'll find speaker cards on the table in the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill out the cards completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the council, city manager, and staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you come to the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your three minutes are up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Maria Pizano?
Hello, I'm Maria Pizano, and I came here a few, several months ago to speak on some issues that were going on in the city. Crime was one of the major issues that we were having problems with. And again, last, two weekends ago, we were victims of, yet again, more threats, assault, and violence in our neighborhood and in my home. We were having a birthday party Friday night, and some people showed up that I was told could not be at the party because of their long record of theft and for assaulting an elderly woman. And when I was told them to leave, I was plunged in the face, and they left, and then came back with seven to 10 black males, who proceeded to assault three other young ladies that were in our driveway or out in my front yard. Luckily, we had some other adults that were there, parents, bigger gentlemen that were there that came out and tried to control the situation. They also text messages were sent to my daughter that if she's out on the street, she's going to be jumped, which we've been facing this problem for the past year and a half in our neighborhood. No, please recall, they never showed. The next evening, a man who has been bothering my daughter for the past year and a half, sent her to the hospital twice, has a long history, record of problems, and nothing has ever been done with, we also have a restraining order against him, showed up at our house, jumped our backyard, into our backyard, and assaulted a young man and my daughter. He was left with two huge black eyes, she had a big knot on her head. Again, we called the police, they didn't show up. The next day, which was Sunday morning, I went to the police station to find out what was going on, so that they could put out a warrant and arrest this person, and like I said, we've had a arrest warrant, we've had a stay-away order for. They came and took a report, not until Sunday evening. The report was supposedly sent in. When I went that week to find out about it, I found out no report was ever sent or given to anybody at the police station, only on previous issue, which half of that wasn't even reported, to what really happened at our house. Like I said, this is someone that we've had a lot of problems with. The worst part of it all is, is nothing is ever done. These people are never arrested, they just run rampant in our neighborhood, cause all kinds of problems. I wish I could just finish what's going on here, because now, I had went over to a house where this person was keeping my daughter in an abandoned house, and when I went in, I was assaulted by this person, and because he claimed I threw a screwdriver at him, now I'm facing criminal charges. I'm going to court now. Nothing was ever done with him, or any of these other people that just roam our neighborhoods and cause all these problems. My children are afraid to even walk around outside our neighborhood, they can't go to school, walk to school, or anything, because, you know, they're being threatened on a daily basis. And I'm sorry, but this is very emotional and very upsetting, because we've been going through it for so long in our neighborhood. And if it's saying the crime rate's down, maybe that's because some of these are, they're not even reported. As a matter of fact, the police, the first police officer during this past year and a half told us, "It's basically my fault that I should keep my children inside the house," you know, instead of going after the people that are causing the problems. And the last police officer told me that he wouldn't even live in this city, that he's just here, you know, as a police officer, and that his advice to me was move out of the city, which we have...
All right, thank you. Mr. Rico, I want the dispatch tapes and the telephone calls, and get the date and time on that party, and I want to know when units were sent, all right? And could I have that within the next couple weeks? Great, thank you. I'll look into that, all right? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council staff, today's AV Press had a headline, "Lancaster Officials Stand Behind Deputies." And below it says, "Council Challenger Calls for Civilian Review Board." I appreciate the AV Press public site, I'm sorry for civilian review board, but they did not prep my complete press release, and I'd like to read it to clarify my concerns. By the way, I proposed civilian review board a month ago before the Antelope Valley Human Relations Commission, so this is not anything new. If you allow me, please, I'd like to read my press release, which was more informative. Michael Reeves, candidate for the Lancaster City Council in the April 10th election, called today for civilian review boards at every contracted sheriff's station in Los Angeles County. Reeves said that recent deputy-involved shootings have some citizens of Lancaster concerned about the policies of the sheriff's department regarding the use of force. Reeves, a former LAPD technical reserve officer for 10 years, does not believe that the sheriff's department has declared war on minorities in Lancaster. Quote, "Being a deputy in the AB is not an easy job. We have potentially hundreds of parolees scheduled to be released into our community in addition to those who live here. People who don't understand law enforcement need to realize what the deputies go through." Unquote. Reeves believes that having deputies' actions monitored by those in charge at individual station houses or multiple boards, and there's four of them, or three of them investigating the recent incident, there's Internal Affairs, the Los Angeles Office of Independent Review, and Sheriff's Homicide, and that will be reviewed by Sheriff's Executive Force. Going back, it says, "Reeves believes having deputies' actions monitored by those in charge at individual station houses or multiple boards such as Eastern Forest, etc., down below, is not satisfactory." Reeves wants each individual action that is challenged to be reviewed by Internal Affairs, referred to a local civilian review board, and then a decision will be made on the deputy's conduct. If it is criminal, then it will be referred to the district attorney for potential review. My simple and uncomplicated process, Reeves said, will promote local confidence in our local sheriff's station and the hard-working people who work there. So I am not anti-law enforcement, I am pro-law enforcement, and I'm anti-bureaucracy, and that's why I favor civilian...
Thank you. You're just going to complain if I appoint the civilian review board? Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Counsel, any agency comments? Counsel Palmitz? Chairman Krist? The redevelopment agency is now adjourned...
For good. I'd like to thank Kitty and Cassandra for their service to the community and what you've done, and really appreciate everything, but we're adjourned...
Permanently.
Permanently.
You know, Mr. Reeves, there is something I want to say. I don't understand why every time there's a gang member who is, you know, regrettably killed in a criminal act, in a criminal act, that it goes from gang member to minority. And the analogy is drawn that this is somehow against minorities. It's not. It's a gang member who happened to be a minority. And make no mistake, in this city, we are at war with gang members. They do not have a place in our life. We do not want them here. And if they threaten the lives of our police officers, they have to accept the consequences of that. But it is not the job of our police officers to go out there and risk their lives and not defend themselves. That will never happen in this city. And I don't care who the gang member is, the fact that he's a gang member and threatened the life of a police officer is enough. For what it's worth, thank you. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, February 14th, 2012. Carol, I'm coming home, and I'm hungry.